To open us up in prayer, so if everybody will stand.
Heavenly Father, thank you again for this day. We thank you for the rain. We ask that you help us to avoid some flooding and other things that could come along with the rain. We just ask for your, do what you feel like we need. We thank you for everybody that's here today, for the opportunity to come together in a free country to discuss ideas and talk to one another. We ask that you would grant us wisdom to make the decisions that need to be made that are in the best interest of our community. These blessings we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, ladies and gentlemen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting today. Zipper, I had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, I had a chance to look at the paid bills. Got a motion and a second to pay the bills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to our agenda. Committee reports. Anybody have anything, any committee reports to report?
You want to report on her meeting with Robin? I'm always the one that does it.
Go ahead.
We met with Robin and just caught up on projects she has going on with the rec department and some, sorry, I brought my weapon with me. One of the things we'd ask the departments to do is do organizational charts, which is helpful, especially like with Robin when she came in as a new director, knowing exactly, I'm a visual person and I need that, so she's been working on that as well as all our other departments, and I thank you, Ron, for getting yours too. So, we just talked about the things that the rec department's doing and actually the direction they're going, which I think was good.
Anybody else?
Well, the rec department got in the blood pressure machines in for a couple weeks and it's been used quite a bit. It's nice to know when you get up there and exercise that you're either not overdone or you're not doing it wrong. But I think it's done well.
I'd like to see us put some signage on it that says we don't verify the accuracy of those machines because those machines are notoriously inaccurate. Is it on there? I didn't look. I stalled the machine and I didn't look, said, great, okay, as long as we've got some disclaimer, so that when they die while they're getting their blood pressure.
Okay, any others? All right, moving right along. Ordinances and resolution, Resolution 2019-06 declaring certain recreation department surplus. I know Robin and her crew's been going through and getting rid of some stuff that's no longer needed for that department, so.
I think some of this might be, and some of this yours as well, yeah. I think first half a dozen out of your team.
They moved.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. New business activity permit for the DeKalb Heart Walk Saturday, August 17th at the Rotary Pavilion Route. Is the hospital that does this, isn't it?
Oh, yep, you guys have looked at it and, okay. I moved it, we had said.
Motion, Mr. Parker.
Okay, got a motion.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, is this the second one or the third?
Third one, yep. They're actually having it, they're actually having it earlier. I think it was in November.
You can't drive them. Not a golf cart, you're not allowed.
Okay, we have a budget adjustment to the DeSoto Golf Course of $5,000. This is the concrete for the cart shed. Get that completed.
They moved.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we have discussion about the third Saturday event. I know the third Saturday committee met and Johnny's not here. I think you were at that meeting, Lynn?
I was. Hold on, I'm sorry. We had allocated money to them this year instead of having everything go through us, which has turned out to be a bad idea, I think. So, what I'd like to see done, and Johnny agrees, and Don was there also, and he thought it was a good solution. Don here, yep. We want to bring that back under events and venues, because it is a city-sponsored event, and put it under Mari's department. And in doing that, they will have to come up with a budget and be held to that budget, which I think will solve a lot of problems.
And the third Saturday people are okay?
Yes, they are.
I think they actually want to do that because if we give them money, they pay bills, there's some tax issues that they're concerned about.
Right, so I guess I would put that in form of a motion.
They're not going to change them this year, but next year, it's too early to change them this year.
You know, they're interrupted by boom days, which isn't, and they realize that boom days was here first. Next year, in 2020, they're looking at starting in March and ending in August. So, I think it'll work out great.
But that, the change in structure is for this year?
Yes. They will write a check back to us for the funds, as well as a documentation of what they've paid so far out of that account. So, we made the motion and second, correct? I'd also like to propose a budget adjustment of 5,000 for them because some of the monies that they got this year was spent on bills that were for last year because of the way their events run and the way our fiscal year runs. So, I would like to move to do a budget adjustment of 5,000.
Put that on next.
Five. Okay, that's fine.
So, we've got a motion and second to bring that back under the events committee.
And everyone's aware of it, Don's aware of it, Don's willing to help with that and kind of oversee the bills and the budget, because he does that with boom days as well.
Okay, so we have a motion and second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. So, we'll discuss that budget adjustment at the next council meeting.
Number six, discussion about annexation of property belonging to Marlin Blaylock located off Roadan Drive on Lookout Mountain.
Y'all remember back before the first of the year, I told you that I'd been approached by Mr. Blaylock about annexing a piece of property that he owns, which is adjacent to another piece of property that he owns, which is inside the city. He has plans to subdivide that. He's also talked to Jimmy Gilbreath, also back before the first of the year, and told him basically the same thing, that his plans were to have an annexed and rezone R1. That's right. Yeah. So, we can, we can approach that, you know, typically in times past, we've had the legislature do the annexation, but Marlin is the only property owner involved with this, only property that would be proposed to be annexed, so we can do it, there's a way we can do it where y'all can go down and do it. But before we go forward, I just want to make sure, about 40 acres. I think that's about right. Yeah. And he owns another 40 or so acres adjacent to it that's already in the city limits and that he had rezoned to R1 some years back. And so, he, he wants to develop all of that area into a subdivision, the way I understood it.
Okay, so under R1, what kind of housing is that?
That's, that's the most restrictive. We have 15,000 square foot lot size and, you know, whatever size house from 600 square feet on up.
But no trailer?
No, absolutely not. Rural farm, which is, that parcel that we're talking about is currently zoned rural farm and you can have trailers in it for mobile homes.
This is outside the city limits, of course, at this point, there isn't any.
Right, I know, but once, if we were to rezon it, then it is more.
Yeah.
I think we have someone here that wants to talk to the, the governor.
We, are we allowed to ask questions?
Sure.
We just were curious what type of housing this is going to be. Is it rental or is he going to sell the lots?
Are they single-family dwellings? Are they rentals, apartment, garden homes? Any idea? Because we surround that acreage that he's trying to annex to the city. No, no issues.
Let me just give, first of all, it's the most restrictive area that we have.
Yes, sir.
And that's all we do. Other than that, we don't control the nature of the building. At this point, there are zero controls on that property.
Yes, sir.
So, if you want to put a pig farm next to you, you could.
Right.
But Jimmy can give you, and I'm sure would be glad to, a copy of what is allowed in an R1 district, and I would hate to sit up here and try to recite it from memory. I'd probably get something wrong. But Jimmy would be glad to give you after the meeting, right down the hall, Jimmy?
This hall.
Right down the hall?
Other hall.
Other hall. He'll be glad to give you a copy of those restrictions so you can see exactly what it'll be limited to. I think it is single-family dwelling, isn't it, Jimmy?
Yes.
And.
It is. If he gets rezoned to R1.
Right. And a minimum lot size for each house, which I think you said was 15,000 square feet, which is about a third of an acre, little, a third of an acre. So, but, but it's the most restrictive we got. If that helped answer your question?
It does, I mean, because at the end of the day, I don't know if you've been up to that area, very few of you have, but there's some nice homes that we're all kind of proud of, and we would like to uphold the integrity and the value of the real estate that we've invested in.
Well, this will put it in our most restrictive area, so it would be the most restrictive thing that we do under ours. Now, I would think that Mr. Blaylock would probably put some additional restrictions in terms of subdivision covenants that may, most people that subdivide actually raise those standards to some degree with regard to minimum lot size, et cetera. Also, there'll be setbacks that are required, and usually subdivisions require a little more than just the basic R1.
Right, like if he was going to do a subdivision, his road requirements would be subject to the city's guidelines, correct?
They'll have to be built in accordance with our guidelines before they'll be accepted by the city, and I think the way we do it now, Tim, is that they have to build the roads before we even accept the subdivision, so yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Actually, the road in the proposed subdivision would be better than the road that's going to it now.
It wouldn't take much, sir.
Yeah, they basically just put a road through the woods out there to build those houses.
It was a logging road till we moved in and we put chert and gravel on it.
Yeah.
And then it became a road.
Right.
So, it had never been utilized by either the city or any other local property owners because of the condition. But once we moved in and put chert and gravel in, it became a very convenient path for all involved.
Now, are y'all in the city or?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're right there, sir, on the corner of where the city.
Yeah.
On the, the, the road that goes up to the water tower that connects Roadan, that is our property, so it's, that's, we're kind of, that's the reason we're a little curious what's going to be developed right next to us.
Sure.
Well, I would, the bottom line is I think it'll be very beneficial to you to have that inside the city limits as opposed to.
I agree.
Nothing.
I agree.
No.
Better entail a public hearing to rezonate Andy before we actually take action, where Marlin could come and speak to what his plans are and then.
It's a drawn-out process. It ain't gonna happen.
If we do it, it's going to be several weeks before this can get done, but that would give Marlin opportunity to tell you what his plans are, if it goes.
Be advertised in the place.
Is, is there any particular reason, and we, we can discuss this after meeting, that you'd rather do it, it's.
Time-wise.
Okay, well, it's just cleaner and less technicalities if you do it through the legislature than if you do it through one of the other processes, but we can do it either way, just whatever y'all think.
I thank you, Mr. Blaylock, and we all, you know, we consider ourselves neighbors and, you know, if we all kind of knew, we're on the same page, I don't think there would be a need for a legislative. I think we could do it, as Mr. Parker stipulated earlier. I don't think there would be any disagreement.
Annexation is very, very technical if you do it. There's four or five ways to do it, and it can be very, very technical if you do it other than the legislature doing it, and they're, they have a much easier route to do it. It's not any different once it's done.
Right.
It's just far easier from the city's standpoint, far, has less risk of some technical error occurring, but I guess that's my problem. Okay, thank you.
So, we just need a motion and a second to allow Andy to proceed with this and.
Okay. Now, you know, the legislature starts, what, next month?
Next month. We'll look at it and, I mean, we still, we decide, that's Rock and I can review it.
I think we still have a public meeting on it, and then if everybody's.
The preliminaries of the cycle, whether how you do it, you've got.
Right. We do that, and then we get them to get it in, get it passed. I'm sure, I'm sure the legislature was going to be involved in the public hearing if it's going to.
Yeah, I'm, Tim, I'd rather the folks that are living out there be involved in that, that decision.
The only problem with the legislature is they've got so many bills to consider. They've already got tons of prefiled bills, so it takes some time.
Usually local bills such as annexation, this stuff, usually not a big problem, that's right.
It's just timing to get them on the table.
That's right.
Okay, so we've got a motion and second on the floor to allow Andy to proceed with this, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
And just one more thing, if you don't mind, just to make clear to y'all, that's not an approval of the annexation, that's just start the process, and there'll be time for people to have, get in for motion and.
We had the pleasure about 10 years ago to come before you guys and try to annex ours with some plans, or hopefully still the future, but I understand it's a process.
Okay, thank you.
And there's still a possibility that it could be, go through the legislature instead of the council.
We're, we're very comfortable with y'all telling us today.
Yeah, okay.
Thank y'all for coming.
Yeah, we appreciate you being here. Okay, number seven, discussion about collection of sewer bill from Valley Head from 2017 to 2018.
This came up sometime last year. We were getting, with Jessica, I think, when we picked it up, that we were not being paid what we thought that we ought to be paid for the sewer disposal. And it turned out that, there's two or three problems, but it, part of it was the meter reading and part of it was, that's majority of it was infiltration from rainwater and creek water and everything else up there. So, they, first of all, replaced the meter with the.
They made.
Valley Head. That feeds into our sewer system, so we knew that we were getting that reading. And they were comparing against their water usage, and of course, the sewage uses were many times more than the water usage, so we knew that they had problems, and they've managed to fix a lot of them. I don't think they fixed all of them. I mean, they'll never get rid of all your infiltration. But we are being billed, we're billing properly and they are paying properly now. The question was, I think we went back, Jessica went back to a certain date and calculated what the payments would have been if we had had, supposedly had that new meter in at that time, and it was somewhere around $34,000. I think Andy's got the figures over there. At the time, we just kind of let it slide and we let the Valley Head have an opportunity to fix their problems and what have you. And we never made a commitment to either adjust that bill or drop the bill or demand payment. We just kind of let that go to. And I think that's up to the council to decide how we want to approach that. Do we want to approach it from a standpoint that that's a due and payable bill? Or do we want to adjust it, or do we want to just forgive it, or do we want to pay it, allow them to pay some of it off by the month?
It may not be anybody's decision. It might be part of our bond covenants if we can't give away our.
Might be.
And, and I didn't understand, does Valley Head's meter, does it read or?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Do we have a meter to know how much to?
It's Valley Head's meter, wasn't it? Yes.
Yeah.
Do we not have a meter?
No. Nope.
Well, I've heard meter before, but I assumed it was our meter.
No, it's on their, it's on their.
Who reads it?
What?
Who reads it?
The sewer guy for Valley Head.
Well, don't you think it would be better or accurate if we had our own meter and our people read it?
That's been $5,000 per meter. I mean, I mean, I can read that meter myself, but it's, you know, he turns it in on 15th of each month.
I couldn't hear you do what?
He turns, he turns the bill, the readings in on the 15th of each month.
But how do you know that meter is accurate?
It's, by, by ADM standards, it's got to be calibrated once a year. Yeah.
And I think they did have somebody come up.
Just be calibrated once a year, same as us at the treatment plant.
But who's holding them accountable for that? I mean, ADM? Do we know they're doing it?
For the calibration of the meter? Yeah, they, yeah, they'll write you up.
They get the certification, don't they?
Yeah.
It's up to date?
Yes.
So, we're pretty confident that we're getting the correct reading now. We was not getting the correct reading. It's a more complicated meter, the old one. This one just reads and.
Straight out of the.
Well, I don't feel like we need to do their sewer for free whenever we're citizens here in town. We're charging them for it.
I agree.
Thought we were reading the meter ourselves. Went to that charity shop.
Understand why we're not reading our own meter?
I think we need to read the meter, verify the numbers, and we need to figure out how they want to pay this bill. Yeah. And I don't care to give a little bit of time, but I don't think we can just let them not pay the bill. That's something we can do, I don't think. I think the due, due and payable, that we can work out the arrangement, you know.
Valley Head has a lock on their flow meter box and we don't have a key to it, so we'd have to get a key from them and put our own lock on it, won't we?
Well, I think we can work that out.
Work that out. We need to verify those readings. If we have to meet up there a certain date, a certain time, and both of us verify that the reading is correct, because I don't know anybody else that has their own meter that we charge for.
I don't either.
I guess a bad precedent.
Is that the only one? Okay. I think we can work that out. They, they're not, they're not going to push you one way or the other. I mean, they've cooperated real well.
Well, lightning hit the mayor a couple, year and a half ago or so.
About two years ago.
About two years ago, and it went two months before they got the meter put in, and that's what started all of this.
We, we can verify that when we read our own meters, we're on that.
Yeah.
When their bill were 30 days off.
Do you have a problem reading it or having somebody read it?
No.
Okay.
No.
So, all we got to do is make sure we got access in.
Yep.
Okay. If it's agreeable with you, I'll get with the mayor up there and we'll work that out. I guess what the next question would be is, is what kind of terms do we want to put on them as far as the outstanding balance?
What kind of terms does Valley Head want?
I don't know. It hadn't been discussed.
I mean, they collected, they collected the money for that, right?
No, not really.
No, I'm talking about from their customers, no? They don't collect it, we do?
Well, it's, it's, this, most of this charge was infiltration, which.
Okay.
So, that was based on.
I got you.
Through her meter, but not.
Okay.
It was based, their, their charges were based on, are they calculating their charges based on what water that they actually use, just like ours at home is? And they had some manholes that were just really catching, acting as cisterns and everything else. I still don't think they've got them all fixed, but we don't have all of them at Fort Payne fixed by any means, because every time we have a real heavy rain, it just triples or borrows the flow in the sewer plant, so.
Can you check the bond or, you said something about the bond?
I've never seen a bond that didn't require that one of the things you can't do is give away your.
Give away, sir. That's right. I think it's just bad precedent.
Accountable for all hours.
Right.
Got a motion.
That's a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed?
The motion is to collect what they owe us and allow mayor to work.
Negotiate terms.
Work out the terms.
Okay. Moving on to number eight, authorization to enter into contracts with Light Environmental for sewer projects.
This is three separate contracts, actually. The Terrific Hills leg of the sewer expansion included some expansion, repairs, replacement at the treatment plant. That, that's one contract, and the other two are for the same thing on the airport road replacement. It's the line on Airport Road as well as some additional equipment at the plant.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
I wonder if it'll have a hard number on that.
Yeah, that's what I wonder.
What he estimated.
Okay.
Eight, eight change for the line and then ten for the rest of it for the treatment plant and stuff.
And that's the Terrific Hills?
No, that's.
That's their force lane replacement. They estimate how long before they have it read that out? Hopefully early summer.
Oh, maybe later in the year. Put a timeline on that, yeah. Right now, they're doing the environmental.
I can't, that's sort of one of those things you can have a guess, but that's about it.
Y'all approved the contract with environmental study.
Yeah, archaeological.
Okay. Okay, number nine, authorization entering into contracts with GMC for Willso Valley Rec Center renovations and changes.
We talked about this, but y'all have not decided on whether or not you're going to do the renovations as presented. This is a contract just to engage them. It doesn't, it doesn't bind us to a scope of work. It's just engaging them to proceed, so.
Sign and get to the form where we can price the project. So. And what, what it is going to cost for them to, to do their part of it?
See, their fee is billed and, you know, they've got a book they pull out and it's a percentage of the total cost, and it's.
But we pay them ahead of time before it's done, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, guys, I'm, I'm sorry, but I have a problem with this, because, I mean, you know, we don't know yet how much the street department is going to cost to replace that building over there or repair it or whatever we're going to have to do to it, and I really think we need to slow down a little bit about spending some of this money we're spending.
Which building are you talking about?
The one that caused the fire and burned.
Oh, yeah.
And we don't know yet how much we're going to have to pay on that.
Their cost on this estimated to be 4.8 million.
Well, I think. Well, I think we need to go slow.
No, 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 that's not, total cost.
They'll probably get a percentage, just...
What's their percentage?
Five hundred ninety-four thousand.
Five hundred ninety-four thousand, guys, I think we need to slow down. That's total for the whole project, that's administration of the project, after it's bid and everything until it's completed, that's not just the design.
Oh, yeah, that's everything, total.
We got one member out today, and I'd like to see him here to... He's not here, but he advised me that he was willing to go ahead with design on all of our projects, at least design so we can price them, but I'll not speak for him anymore than what he's told me about this, but every time we put this off, we lose some money.
I'd like to see how much things cost regardless, just so we can create a vision and work ahead, and if, do you know what a design of one of these projects has cost us, like the police department?
Well, I believe we just said this was gonna go over, I made it up.
No, 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 that's, that's, that's for overseeing the entire project and everything, I'm just talking about the design paper.
Well, and the reason it's hard to put a number on that is because the scope of the work keeps changing, you know?
We're never gonna get to point C if we don't do A and B first, and we've done A, we decided to do some stuff, B, we gotta figure out what it's gonna cost, or we're never gonna do C.
Originally, he, Robert had designed some meeting rooms, and then there was some question about whether we needed those rooms or not, so he changed those, so he came and made the change, it changes.
We had the design down from the last meeting, we all agreed on it, as I understood it.
My understanding that we were ready to proceed with trying to price these projects, and we can't price them until we design them.
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
I'll, I got it.
Here, we got a motion and a second to proceed, all in favor say aye?
Just in the design.
The design.
Well, what you're doing at this time is you're entering for the contract with GMC, and what your bill will be is based on what you actually complete, if you only design it, then it'll be for the design.
Right.
If you then decide after it's designed, you decide to build it, then you're gonna, you're already contracted with them to do the overseeing and the management, so the contract with them is just, you do how much ever we tell you to do, in, in essence.
Right.
But there is no commitment, I mean, if y'all came back tomorrow and said, hey, we're not gonna do that project, it'd be zero, but if you came back tomorrow and said we want a full, billable design, then you're gonna pay for that full billable design, even if you ultimately say we're not...
No, we're not gonna do it, okay?
I'd welcome the visitor, please, and change.
Visitor.
Yeah.
So we had the motion, second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried.
Aye.
So last thing on the agenda, Mayor, you got a report?
I don't want y'all voting on mine. I've got two or three things that's agreed in court, so...
I got a letter from Tarkog, and as you well know, Tarkog has to clear any SRF funds that are done, and with the route revision that was done on the, the first phase of the sewer system over there, they just gave us a letter saying they approved of it, so that's been a matter of formality, more than anything. Sometime back, probably, I don't know, eight or nine months ago, we talked about asking the legislature to amend some regulations within the approving authority on the selection of the board, the people that make up the board, the term limits and what have you, and I think if we're going to pursue that, now's the time to do it, we've already got one bill down there that we've asked them to do, this would be a good time to do it. So I just bring that up for the fact that, consider it, see if you want to follow through with that, I think you wrote up a preliminary draft.
Well, I don't know that I wrote a preliminary draft, Steve Busman and I had some discussions about it, and of course, several things have happened with Steve since that time, and, but I think we need to sit down, I need to sit down with Steve and get a final one, but if y'all are in, all want to do that, then I'll be glad to proceed with that.
Last time we talked, you know, that we, Jennifer McCurley had requested a donation, so to speak, on, on the Leadership to Kev, I got back in touch with her, and I told her that, you know, we had to have a contract with anybody that we did, and if she wanted to pursue that, that she could come up with a contract to get with Rocky or whoever, and present it to the council for approval. I think that we ought to support Leadership to Kev, and in order to do it, we need some sort of contract, and that would put X amount of dollars and what have you, so that's y'all's decision. I have not talked to Jennifer since then, so I don't know what her prognosis is on that, any feelings?
I think we talked about it, and maybe starting next year, doing an appropriation to, to the...
Yeah, yeah, we, we need a contract for that as well, and it's, you know, I, I don't think it's had anything to do with this year, I think it's from now on that we're gonna see what we're gonna do.
Leadership to Kev is under the chamber, correct?
It's a part of the, it kind of started from the chamber, yes.
So we could just add it to the chamber and designate it for Leadership to Kev without going into a separate contract?
It's Rocky right there.
Well, you could do that, but the way they did it was, you, you made an appropriation to the chamber, which was designed, or I assume that y'all had made a decision on it based on what they do, and Leadership to Kev has always been part of that, so I assumed you'd, and then they came back and asked for basically separate money to do Leadership to Kev, so that's what you need to decide, is whether you want to...
You said we could do that?
Basically, but the issue is whether you want to, well, they, they were treating Leadership to Kev as a separate entity.
It is its own 501(c)(3).
Okay, okay.
So you don't have to have a separate contract to them.
All right, that's fine.
It's totally separated legally.
Okay, I didn't know they were separate, nonprofit.
But we basically just do them an annual appropriation, after they present us with a contract...
They will present us with, this is a service we want to render to the city, then, number one, you've got to decide if it is a service that the city either does render or wants to render, and secondly, if they're the appropriate vehicle to do it through, and then third, you can make an appropriation, or enter, it's not really an appropriation, enter into a contract then to perform certain services, and you'll pay them X number of dollars to perform those services.
Okay, I'll pursue that, and we'll, we'll look at that next year when time comes. That's it.
That's all you got? All right, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to address the council in your reason? Do now, speak now, forever hold your peace?
Correct.
Yeah, that's right. We, we appreciate you all coming today and being part of our council meeting, we have a, a motion to go into executive session, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
Me?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, we will go into executive session, we appreciate you all coming.